All right, good evening. Uh, hold on one minute. Mr. Do I start the um? Do not disturb.
Don't use that.
They want that off. I don't, I don't need that on.
I don't even want to see them.
Okay.
Okay, so you actually are going to uh.
Good evening. It is Wednesday, November 4th, and this is the regular town council meeting. Madam Clerk.
Hey, it is 6:35 and all, all members are present. That would be Mayor Granatoski, Councillor Bordelon, Bumgardner, Franco, Heed, Melendez, Obray, Parker, and Zepari. Welcome all.
Thank you very much. And um, Councillor Heed, would you lead us in a salute to the flag, please?
Uh, sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Into the republic.
For which it stands.
Which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Liberty.
Justice for all.
Thank you, Councillor Heed. Recognitions, awards, and memorials. We have nothing this evening. Public hearings, there is nothing here. We're on to receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns, and neither the manager's office nor the clerk received any citizens' petitions for this week. So we are, um, there are no responses to citizens' petitions. We are on to the consent calendar. Um, so, Councillor Bumgardner, would you please move the consent calendar?
Yes, I'll make a motion to move the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved by Bumgardner? Seconded, that was Zepari?
Yes, ma'am.
Seconded by Zepari. Okay, so this moves all the items. This moves 7A through 7D, including the minutes of the 6th and the 13th, uh, the appointments, and the special trust fund contribution. So is there any discussion on either set of minutes?
Should we uh, read the names of the special contributions, people making special contributions?
Councillors of Perry, I'd like to go through the minutes first and see if there's anything there, please, and then we can, we can take care of that as well, sir. Thank you. So, Councillor Franco, and if you could please just tell us which date in the page, please?
Sure, it's October 6th. It's page eight of our packet. And it said, Councillor, where it says Town Councilors, it says, "Council Parker left a meeting at 7:26." And I'm not exactly sure if that was accurate, but she voted on things, so I'm not exactly sure if, if she was there the whole meeting.
She walked, she came in and out. You'll see it further down that she came in. Back in on the meeting.
Okay.
Yes, I, I had to, I had to step away. I had a family emergency.
Okay.
But she came back and voted.
Does it's, maybe I missed it. Does it say where she came back in?
It does. I, I'll point it out to you when I find it.
All right, that's okay. Is, maybe I missed it. Um, I just wanted to make sure that that was accurate, and I, I didn't want to show that she had left when she was actually there. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the minutes? Okay, seeing none. Um, Councillors of Perry, we have the special trust fund contributions which begin on page 17. Um, if you would like to read, let me make sure I have the right page. Yes, there are, there are several. Um, if you would not read the donation amounts though, sir, if you just read the names, that would be most gracious.
Okay, uh, Joelle Anderson to Social Service Discretionary, Marjorie Fondulus to Social Service Discretionary, uh, Marjorie Fondulus to Groton Utilities Energy Assistance Program. And then, uh, there were uh, donations to the Groton Food Locker by Nancy Barnhart, Marshall uh, Char- Charola Luce, Marshall Chair, Marshall Chiara Luce, William and Susan Pe- Pe- Whis- Pe- Pe- Peolowski, uh, Charlene Corkhill, Louise and Gregory Esposito, Robert and Madeline Frank, Susan and Clyde Gordon, Walter Grant, Sandra and Benjamin Hell, Mystic Congregational Church, Rosalie and Catherine Rathman, and Colleen Whipple. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillors of Perry.
Can I make a correction on that? That was Charlene Corkhill.
Charlene Corkhill, excellent, thank you. And I'm sorry, Councillor Melendez, did you wish to um, give us the list of people for personnel and appointments that are listed in the consent calendar?
Um, the list of, uh, that we reappointed?
Yes, it's on page.
Yeah, I have it. Three? Okay, can you hear me well?
Yes, thank you, Councillor Melendez.
Okay, um, we appointed Thomas McLaughlin to the Shellfish Commission uh, as an alternate. We appointed as an alternate David Hale to the Shellfish Commission.
I think, I'm sorry, excuse me. Um, I think that's from the prior meeting.
Absolutely, that is definitely from the prior meeting.
So we're on page, we're on page 16, and this is with Mr. Conan, Mr. Marshawn. Mr. Smith, if I'm looking at the correct page. Madam Clerk, is that the correct page with Mr. Conan?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
I see. Yes, we appointed Richard Conan to the Shellfish Commission, appointed Donald Marchand to the Board of Assessment and Appeals. We appointed as an alternate Douglas Smith to the Zoning Board of Appeals. We reappointed Paul Bates to the Harbor Management Commission, reappointed Anne Sloan Randkin to the Harvard Management Commission, and we reappointed Kenneth W. Steer to the Harbor Management Commission.
Thank you very much. All right, so, we will vote on the consent calendar. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with nine councillors, thank you. Communications and reports. Um, I'm gonna start us off again this week, and uh, it's the day after Election Day. We don't normally meet on Wednesday, so welcome everybody who's here on a Wednesday to enjoy the council meeting. I just wanted to give a big thank you to our registrars. Kristen Vendetti and Jean Rogers, as well as our town clerk, Betsy McCauscher, for the job that they did with the election yesterday, and I know they're not done. But uh, the bulk of the work, the busiest day, um, was probably yesterday, and they did a phenomenal job. And you got the town through without any major hitches, and uh, the people of Groton are thankful to you for all your work, and um, we appreciate it. We know you have more to do to get everything certified, but thank you very much. I just want to express the gratitude. I wanted to also um, express my sympathy to the family of former, of state rep Nancy DiMarinas. Nancy served on this council, she served on the city councils, she was the state representative for many terms. She was a teacher, she was a guidance councillor, and she was one of the founding mothers of Safe Futures. And um, it's a, it's a loss to her family and to the community. She was a quite remarkable woman, and um, she will be missed, and you can honor her memory by um, being generous with Safe Futures. I have two meetings that I attended. Um, the long-term recovery meeting was held on Wednesday, October 28th. Councillor Bordelon was present, as was, um, I'm sorry, Councillor Bumgardner was present. And we had discussion about the movement to red alert for the town of Groton. Um, councillor, Representative Conley joined us. Uh, Mr. Bronk reviewed some of the items that he had discussed with us. Um, talked about some ideas to address the needs of local businesses. Moderator Eben was there, and she spoke about, um, she wanted to have a repository of information for small businesses, and Mr. Bronk replied that that's in existence already. Um, Councillor Bumgardner uh, certainly endorsed the idea of outdoor dining as a way, as a bridge for the local restaurants to get through. Mr. Bronk noted that we have a page of hyperlinks for small businesses on the Explore More Groton page, and they've rolled that out, and it's, it looks very good. Much information, the minutes will be posted. Um, Councillor Bumgardner mentioned the testing sites, and as did Mayor Hedrick and Mr. Burt. So that was on the 28th of October. The golf advisory board meeting on the 2nd, which was Monday. Revenues are looking very good. Play has been, they're, they're calling it a COVID bump as opposed to a tiger bump. It's been remarkable how much play they're getting at the golf course. And they had begun discussion on their budget items, their capital improvement projects, and their operating budget. And they will probably not, they're, they're being realistic in noting that their six-year CIP plan may not be funded this year due to our budgetary constraints. Um, that doesn't mean that they don't need those items, it's just that they understand that this may be a tight budget year for everybody. And they are looking at trying to um, use some of their increased revenue to perhaps put aside to finance some of those items. And they were just discussing some of the improvements that they were making. And they're doing a good job with marketing, reaching out to people. They were featured in a magazine with 200,000 circulation. Um, America's Dream Courses, so that's always a plus. And Jessica from Parks and Rec is working on promoting the golf course as a life, golfing as a lifelong sport that the whole family can enjoy. And lots of needs as far as um, the infrastructure of the buildings, as well as maintaining the infrastructure of the course. Sorry, but I had multiple meetings. All right, onward upward, Councillor Bordelon, or Councillor Bumgardner.
Hello, uh, um, Mayor Granatoski?
Yes.
Yes, I apologize. I'm uh, remote right now and just received a phone call, so I, I apologize. Um, unfortunately, I, I couldn't uh, hit the end button, so. So I think there's a little bit of a glitch. No, no, it was just, um, I, I don't think you could get my audio while I was speaking.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
I can. Do you need us to come back to you, sir?
No, uh, no, ma'am. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, but um, nonetheless, I just would like to echo um, uh, the really truly eloquent remarks um, made by um, Mayor Granatoski. Um, would like to extend my deepest condolences to the DiMarinas family. Um, you know, having served up in the legislature, I actually happen to um, serve with a few of her, her colleagues who spoke so warmly of her. Um, and um, you know, had the opportunity to catch up with her uh, daughter last year, um, and um, you know, uh, and um, we're able to extend, um, you know, some well wishes to her, and so I'm, I'm deeply heartbroken by her loss, and again, wishing uh, her, her family, um, you know, my uh, deepest condolences um, during this very tragic time. But um, nonetheless, uh, I think everyone can breathe a little bit. Uh, you know, a, sure, many of us are on short sleep right now uh, as uh, one of the most historic uh, evenings in, in my lifetime, and, and I, I think a lot of people would agree. You know, uh, we finally um, got through the evening and um, and got through an election um, where more than any uh, other election year, uh, voters uh, turned out to make their say on the future of this country, and so more than anything else, would just like to commend every single individual who uh, took the time uh, during a, a, their long day and uh, uh, yesterday, and uh, took the time um, over the last few weeks to send in their absentee ballots, uh, to deeply thank them for their efforts and um, and, and um, uh, participating in our democratic process. It is so important, and it was so encouraging to see young people uh, turn out in droves, um, in, in neighborhoods, um, you know, and uh, cause many of us spend time knocking doors and seeing neighborhoods that sometimes I don't always show up to vote, uh, showing up in droves, and that is a, you know, what, what we need to see more of, and I, I am encouraged by that, and I would implore uh, every single voter to continue voting at the local level. Um, you know, in many cases, uh, the decisions that uh, my fellow councillors and our uh, colleagues in the Board of Education and RTM, in some cases, impact your personal lives uh, more than uh, the decisions made by our president and our, our congress. Um, and so, you know, get involved, um, you know, know your candidates, and um, and no matter who you vote for, uh, do your homework on, on the people who are going to represent your community, um, because um, when you do, um, uh, our entire community is better for it. Um, so um, I, I really look forward to an update from our, our clerk. I just, again, hats off to her office, um, you know, the professionalism there, um, with, you know, so many of her staff, uh, you know, cannot be understated, uh, as well as our, our registrars who did a heck of a job, um, under what was a conditions that no registrar, clerk's office, or volunteer has ever had to deal with, you know, having to uh, put on an election uh, during a, a global pandemic. Um, so again, uh, just hats off to our community, and uh, without further ado, I'll, I'll pass it to uh, my councillor to the left.
Thank you, Councillor Bumgardner. Councillor Parker?
I too would like to extend my thanks and gratitude to all who were at the polls, and thank you, um, Mrs. McCauscher, and our registers, registrars, I apologize. Um, my condolences to the Mrs. DiMarinas's family. She was my guidance councillor, so um, she made a big impact in my life, so um, always a kind word, and loved guiding young people's minds to help them on the right path. So I have to thank her for that, and um, okay, um. So the meetings I attended this week, I attended, well, actually, this evening, I attended the Board of Ed, Town Council, City Council, and RTM liaison meeting, and I believe Dr. Grenier's here. So um, if I miss something, I'm hoping he can jump in. I know one thing, they're wrapping up the first semester. Um, fall sports are over, but they will be doing winter sport conditioning. Um, as you know, Dr. Grenier, it will be leaving us, and they have selected someone, but they um, haven't formalized it yet. So um, we should be hearing news about that news shortly. Um, they're still in the hybrid model, and they have chosen the names for the uh, two schools, and it's uh, Thames River Magnet School. I, but I think it's Elementary, Thames, Thames River Magnet uh, Elementary School, and the Mystic River Magnet Elementary School. And um, they will be all magnets. They have themes, they have three themes. They haven't decided which ones is gonna be for which school, and Mr. Street, Jim Streeter provided a lot of historical information in help choosing the two names. Mr. Dean Antipas is now on the Board of Ed, um, and I think that's it. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Um, the RTM did report out that the Civilian Oversight and Research and Review Committee should have a report shortly. Um, they passed the paving, and um, they did mention about the Athletic Task Force, about a meeting for tomorrow night at 7:00 PM, and that all invite, all are invited. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Parker, and we will hear from Dr. Grenier when we get through um, the rest of the items in eight, so thank you for joining us, Dr. Grenier. We are on to Councillor Franco.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to thank uh, everyone who worked the election, uh, the town clerk, thank you, Betsy, and the town clerk's office, um, all the registrars, and all the poll workers who are out there all day long, working at the polls. And everything that you do, uh, to help make this go off without a glitch and hair and run. I'd also like to uh, thank all those who ran for office. Um, congratulations to the winners, and uh, and to those who didn't quite make it, thank you, cause it's quite, um, it's quite a hard feat to run for office and to step up and and try and run for office, uh, so I thank you for um, even running. So I also received um, notification, both Lee Ann and I both did, from uh, Mr. Bruce McDermott. And he has requested that the town hall um, could use some repainting, cause there's some peeling paint up at um, up on the eaves by the gutters, and it was noticeable, I guess, when people are dropping off their ballots, and um, he would like to see that, if, if maintenance can take care of that. I wanted to also mention the Athletic Task Force is having a meeting tomorrow night, as uh, Councillor Parker had noted, at 7:00 PM. You can, and join and buy Zoom. And this is not just for the town, these, I believe, I haven't been to meetings in some time, but they're, they're looking to take care of the needs of both the schools and the parks and recreation, because they're so intertwined right now, and um, and with the shortage, uh, there are many people involved in these meetings, and they want the public to come out and to voice their opinions on their thoughts. So I'm encouraging people, the whole community, to come out and uh, join this meeting. And one other thing I would just like to question, when I read the packet tonight, and I saw the donations for the food locker, which I'm really, I'm pleased that these are in here now. Um, I was just wondering if the town manager may be able to give us updates in the future as to what the balance of the food locker um, fund is. Um, you may not have it tonight, but just in the future, if we can get, maybe, just so we can see where we're at with um, everything that's going on with COVID and the needs of our community. Um, so we can sort of keep an eye on what we, as councillors, can do to try and promote this within our community for donations. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I believe that money is budgeted for the painting of that area that um, Mr. McDermott referenced. And um, I think it was the last meeting where there was a packet included that gave all the balances for all the various accounts for social services. Let's see, we're on to Councillor Heed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I had told you the previous week, I think, that uh, we were setting up a King Trail, King Property Trails Committee. Um, and we did end up hiking the trail the uh, first time with, with the initial setup group. That would include Ben Moon, Sarah Patrick, um, Eugenia Vlogra, Jill Rusk, uh, Sue Sutherland, and Sima Evan. And I think I'm missing somebody from that list. So that was Sunday afternoon, we, we took a hike, and we started to lay out the, the plan. It was, you know, beautiful, of course. Um, and then uh, Tuesday, um, I worked, I started at the absentee ballot counting center at the senior center with a lot of volunteers. Well, we called them volunteers. We, we were all paid um, a certain amount, a small stipend, but uh, um, you know, everybody was there because they wanted to make sure that the election went really well, so they had a full uh, staff for that. And then around 10 o'clock, I got shifted over to District Five to help count the ballots there, and, and that was a lot of fun, sot a lot, a lot of uh, people that, you know, I've met over the years. Um, so uh, and it, everything seemed to go smoothly from 10 till 8 o'clock, no issues. So that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Uh, Councillor Obray, please.
I'd also like to extend my sympathies to Nancy's family. Nancy and I had been friends for many, many years, quite a lady. Uh, we did a lot of things together politically. To Nancy, Betsy, uh, McCauscher, I think you did an outstanding job. I want to thank you very much. I know how chaotic it was. I had a son down there at the end, trying to get in and get everything done, which he did. And I want to thank Conrad Heed for keeping us informed as to what was going on, uh, where we needed to be, or what we were doing, or what was being done, or whatever. Uh, we got emails from him, and I greatly appreciate that. And uh, I had the pleasure of being a poll stander down at the Zabriski House, and it was no place any colder than was down there that day. But it was fun. I got to spend a lot of time with uh, Joe DeLaPorta, which was really informative. He's a ver, he's a lot, he's really on top of so many different things. And um, I, I think, other than that, that's about what I have for this evening, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bordelon?
And uh, thank you. Hello, as I dropped my phone. There we go, technology at its best. All right. Um, first, I just want to send my, you know, sympathies and um, condolences to all the families that have lost people, people recently, including Nancy. I, I know the name from the community and all of her great efforts to help out um, young people in our community, so um. I also want to send out um, sympathy to a high school family who recently just lost a father um, in a boating accident, and that's pretty much what I will say. Um, and I know my son worked um, with their daughters, and as a parent of a high school student at the same age, um, I didn't know the family on a personal level. I knew them from a community level, but I just wanted to send my condolences out to them, and you know, your losses, the community's loss, and uh, you know, I know it's, it was a tragic day for my son when he showed up at work. Um, so I just wanted to express my, my condolences and, and, and sympathy from um, from another, you know, Groton family, um, to, to another, uh, especially um, of a family with young, you know, young children, or adolescents, I should say. I, us also, you know, as we read the news, um, a possible, or it says in the paper today, suicide over at Bluff Point. I don't believe they were Groton residents, but still the least, another loss in our town, and I can't stress enough the importance for um, making sure we check in on people during this tough time, and um, so I, I'm very saddened to hear um, that at Bluff Point. Um, I also have concerns, and I want to express my, extend my empathy to the family of the young girl at Walmart who, once again, I won't go into the details, cause I was not there, but it seems like there was some apologies made, and um, you know, I, once again, can't stress enough of how some people in our community do feel that they are um, this are suspicious, um, and are called out for things in our community, um, for things that aren't related to what the matter really is, and um, I just want to, again, send, send my hand to that family, and um, you know, as, as a minority female myself, I, I can't imagine, or I know, I actually do know what it's like to be wrongly accused, or um, just being suspicious because of who I was, so um, there's more to that story, but I, the findings and things don't seem like they add up, so um. And to say that that's happening in our town is concerning to me, so. Um, also to the COVID families and things, you know, working in the medical field, I see on a daily basis, uh, the, the numbers are rising, and I can't stress the, the importance right now more than ever. Our numbers are higher now than they were when we closed everything down. And I think that we're all getting COVID fatigue, and it, um, myself included. But it's, I can't stress the, the, the importance of just making sure that we are helping each other out, and really thinking of people that are A, in need, or um, B, who are losing loved ones, or may become sick. Um, with that, I want to uh, extend, um, as a volunteer and have worked for Legislite Health District. Um, I appreciate um, them coming out this weekend and opening up a free um, COVID screening at the high school, uh, drive-up style, which you didn't, you did not have to have a doctor's orders to do such. I participated in that program. I, I'm a firm believer in the more you screen, the better, and that way you are, you know, playing your part to make sure you're um, you're doing your part to make sure that your exposure rates and things are being accounted for. Also, community health was out there as well. And I think when I went through, I asked the number, and it was over 200 and something. So I just, having that accessibility to folks, and, I mean, some families had four people in the car. And I just can't stress enough the importance of being tested, looking for these types of drive-up areas, and being proactive and doing your part in the community. So, once again, hats off to Legislite Health District, Community Health, for coming to our town and making it so much easier for us to have the accessibility. A lot of people talked about the election. Thank you to, you know, our town clerk and all the register voters and everybody that played a part in our local election. I voted at the city municipal building, and there was quite the line, but it ran smoothly, and it was orderly, and everybody was able to get in and get out. With that, in all the years I've been able to vote in the town of Groton, I don't think I've ever stood in the line like that, I must say. And that's not a criticism of the town. I guess it's more to the voter. I was excited to see so many people actually turned out, no matter who you were voting for. And if we can continue to do such, it's an amazing responsibility, but also a value to our community. So when you see some of the local elections that are not national elections, you know, one by one or two votes, and only 300 or 400 people show up, you get concerned. But to see the numbers that we had come out, no matter who you voted for, that was impressive. And I hope that stamina continues. So as far as things that I've attended, besides the Legislite Health District COVID, I was at the task force meeting where we spoke to some of the invested or interested parties in our community that would utilize the sports fields. And they kind of were looking at what was presented and kind of gave some feedback. As was already stated, there will be a meeting this Thursday, and I encourage everyone to come out. I think the link is just going to be posted. So I think, you know, for, you know, thoughts, improvements, I think it's the important things that we hear from the community. And I think that's important for transparency, so everyone can be a part. I encourage you to share the link. Maybe there's somebody who doesn't know what's going on and wants to get involved. So I think that's important. Monday, I also ate my dinner after getting tuned into the Board of Ed meeting. They had a finance meeting. It was quite interesting, a lot of information with COVID and things in ways that they're trying to budget and keep everything going along. And I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I think Councilor Baumgartner's connection dropped at around 7:03. And I keep watching to see if he comes back in. I'm not seeing him back in yet. So probably, once he gets reconnected, he'll rejoin us.
Okay, thank you. 7:03, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Let's see. Councilor Melendez, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing to report, but I would like to echo the sentiments of other councilors. I want to thank the clerk's office and our town registrars and all of the poll workers for putting on a successful election in the middle of a pandemic. You know, you look around the country at other parts of the country, and people are waiting in lines for five, six hours. And I just feel blessed to live in a town where, you know, if you stand in a line for 45 minutes or an hour, that's sort of like an outlier. So just thank you for everybody who who had a part in making the election successful.
Thank you. Councilors of Perry.
I would echo Councilor Melendez's thankfully brief remarks, thanking the poll workers and those who were responsible for successfully running the election that we had in Groton. I would also echo my fellow councillors' condolences for the family of Nancy P. Marinus. Not that I knew her, but I appreciate anyone who has spent so much of their lives in public service to Groton, the community, and the state. That's it for me. I have nothing else to reveal.
Thank you, Councilors of Perry. Clerk of the Representative Town Meeting.
Okay, the RTM is due to meet next week on a Thursday, as the 11th is Veterans Day. They don't have anything on their agenda, so don't be surprised if the meeting is canceled. The next meeting after that will be in December. So we'll look forward to that. I'll certainly keep you posted. They did change their rules, and you should have received a copy of that.
Clerk of the Council.
The only thing I have to report is an excellent election. It went off without any problems whatsoever. The registrars did a fabulous job of training the poll workers. And it was observed by the Republican Town Chair from Groton and a distinguished former mayor of the city. And for all the poll, for the ballot, absentee ballot counting, which there were over 7,000 ballots to count. So that's an astounding number. So kudos to everyone, and thank you for the accolades.
Thank you. Councilor Franco, is your hand up again? I'm not sure if I just didn't take it down or not.
No, it is up. I just wanted to add, if I could, under Communications, that Mr. Lyons had passed away in a boating accident, and it was Matthew Lyons. And there is an actual GoFundMe that is going around to help pay for his children's education. And if anybody in our community would like to donate, that would be very nice.
Thank you, Councilor Franco. The town manager this evening has a bit of a plumbing emergency at his home, and he is dealing with that right now. So if anyone, he keeps in regular contact with the council. If you have any specific questions, we can relay them to him, and I'm sure he will be very speedy in responding to you tomorrow when he's back in the office. So thank you very much. We are on to item Roman numeral 8E, and this is for Department Head Superintendent of Schools and Board of Education. And Dr. Grenier is with us this evening. Thank you, Dr. Grenier, for joining us. I know you had a 5:30 meeting, and I apologize I couldn't be there. But Councilor Parker attended most ably and gave a great report, and we look forward to your remarks, sir.
Right. She did. She captured most of it. Well, I don't think it's any surprise, and I appreciate Julia speaking about the board has, in fact, selected Susan Austin to be the next superintendent of schools.
All right.
They have not yet voted officially on the contract. And, but, but Kim Watson made the announcement to the district, so it's not confidential. Susan, Susan has, of course, been in the district for the last six years, and I think everyone is really thrilled with that appointment. And they, the board has requested that I stay until January 1st, at which point Susan will take over. And I think my big job that I'm promised the board is I will develop a detailed budget for next year, and at least the foundation of a budget for FY '23. This is going to be, I know, some rough sledding. So I think it would be good for me to kind of lay that foundation. The other thing is, we know that one of your former colleagues has joined us. We were thrilled that Dean was recommended, and he was interviewed by the board and took his place, and actually was part of the selection process for the new superintendent. So that was great. He's off and running. I did want to say that, unfortunately, last Monday, which I hope is not a trend, we had five five cases of COVID in the district. As a result, we closed three schools for two weeks. The typical reason for that is that there is so much contact tracing that we have to do. Depends on who the individual is, of course. In some cases, the contact tracing is very limited, because perhaps there's a small cohort. But as you can imagine, if it's a staff member, or if it's a secondary student, there's a lot of contacts. And so we've had to, we've had to work that, and that's been a, that's been a bit of a challenge. And because of that, because the high school is now out for the next two weeks, that is the end of the fall sports season. So interscholastic sports are over. The, all the teams had their truncated, shortened season, but they played, and they had their regular competition. The football team, as you know, had also a season, but it was limited to touch football and then some lineman activities. And it actually was a pretty, I think it was very enjoyable for the kids. The CIAC voted to approve a, sort of an early spring football season, if it's safe, which would take place in, through the months of March and the first two weeks of April. So if the pandemic is calmed down by that point, we may, if the Department of Health would approve it, we may be able to play regular football. But I think everyone is pretty concerned about that. The winter season starts, the last, for conditioning purposes, starts the last week of November. And I think, again, everyone is concerned that now, obviously, these are all indoor sports, which means they're a little bit more risky. And, but at this point, the CIAC, the state governing body for interscholastic sports, has approved that. I'll just mention a couple of building things, actually, three building things. One is, we believe we're going to get a certificate of occupancy, a full occupancy for the middle school, either later this week or early next week. The gym has been completed. The black box theater, choral area has been completed. So the school internally, for all intents and purposes, is completed. They're still doing some work on the roof, but that will continue for a while. And then, of course, the two new elementary schools are amazing. In the middle of a pandemic, we had a topping-off ceremony that Rachel was able to come to, which was really nice that we could thank the town council. I think next week, we'll have a topping-off ceremony. That school, by the way, is, the one that we have the topping-off ceremony, is going to be called, as Juliet said, Mystic River Magnet School. And the school that will have a topping-off ceremony for next week will be called Thames River Magnet School. And so we're really, we're really excited about that. If you go over to, even Councilor Franco, if you go over to Mystic River, I have to actually get this right, Mystic River Magnet School, you'll probably be amazed at the work they've done. They're studying to actually put the walls in now. These things move incredibly fast, once the infrastructure. And so we're looking forward to, Thames River should be right on the heels of that. And then we'll go forward with that construction. And as Juliet said, starting on September 1st, next fall, we will have a 100% Magnet Elementary District, which means any child in the town of Groton or the city of Groton can go to any one of the five elementary schools. And so the themes are going to be, there's going to be environmental marine life science theme at one school, active exploration, play and ingenuity at another school, and discovery academy, nurturing creativity and curiosity. So each of the three schools will then join the two other schools, which is Northeast Academy, which is a performing arts school, and Catherine Klonowski, which is a STEAM, science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics. So it will be, it will be really very exciting for the district, because, as you know, lots of parents are interested in having their children go to magnet schools. So what we're going to organize is, people can go to the school, which is their neighborhood zone school, which essentially won't change for Northeast, Charles Barnham, or Catherine Klonowski. The children who currently go to SB Butler, and most, the vast majority of students who go to Clonchester will go to Mystic River. And the children who go to Mary Morrison, and all the children adjacent, immediately adjacent to Thames River, will go there. So that's coming along. And, of course, the big thing, how we've been spending our time, is we have been struggling mightily with trying to do this hybrid, which means that about a third of the children come in on Monday and Tuesday. Another third of the children come in on Thursday and Friday, and the last third of the children are remote full-time. So at any one day, at least 66% of the children are home. And I think what we're finding, it breaks two ways. The elementary staff seems to be doing, I don't want to say that it's manageable, it's extremely difficult to teach the children in front of you and the children, the 66% of the children at home. But I think having, we'll say, 21 kids, to make the math simple, you've got seven in front of you two days a week. The other seven are in front of you the other two days of the week. And then you have the seven at home, they're always there, they're always on the Zoom. That seems to be a reasonably manageable, it comes and goes. It's harder some days than other days. But at the secondary level, where teachers typically have 110, 120, sometimes 140 students, you can imagine that is far more difficult, far more complex. And so I would say that the secondary folks are struggling, and we're really, we're really trying to think outside the box, frankly. I'm not sure this is really sustainable. People are absolutely exhausted. We're working, you know, all day Wednesday, eight, 10 hours on Wednesday, frequently all day Saturday. As you can imagine, you teach, you teach all day, and, because you project classes and whatever. And then, when the school day is over, when the kids in front of you get on the bus to go home, you now have the 66% of the kids who weren't with you, and you have to check all their work, check their attendance, check all their various activities that has been assigned, the math work, literacy work, and so forth. It's quite difficult. And so we are, we're really, really struggling with that. And we, and then, of course, when we get these cases, Legislite has been really terrific. They help us primarily, they notify us of cases. We sometimes notify them of cases. And then they turn to us to do, pretty much to do the contact tracing. In other words, they'll, they'll say that there's a student or a staff member in X place. And then, we, because we have the knowledge, we, the schools have the knowledge. So in some cases, there was a case at the middle school about three weeks ago, where there were, potentially, there were more than 100 contacts. So we had to, we had to interview the 100 people to determine if they were within six feet for more than 15 minutes. And we were able to whittle it down to 41. And then, as you know, those 41, we recommend they get tested, and then they go home, they need to self-quarantine for 14 days. The little, little highlight to that, however, and I knock wood when I say this, not a single test has come back positive, which, to me, means that people are getting COVID in our community, that's for sure. But they're But they're not necessarily getting COVID, where they don't seem to be getting COVID in schools. Now, of course, that could change tomorrow, so I I don't want to. I don't want to give you any indication we're taking that lightly. We we are not, we are. Even even the the youngest children, the the four year olds. Are wearing masks pretty much 100% of the time. Actually, with not much problem, we we haven't, we have not run into a single instance where someone has been reluctant. Like refuse to to wear masks. And the teachers wear masks 100% of the time because of the hybrid we've been. At the elementary level, fairly successful keeping people six feet apart. At the at the secondary level, when you have 350 kids walk into a building, it's not really. Half of the kids are there, so in the in the in the classrooms, a third of the kids are there. In in the classrooms, they're spread out fairly well, but but they mix, unlike the unlike the the young children. So we're, you know, we're, I think we're 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 handling that fairly well. But, you know, we we go to meetings and John Burt and I go to these meetings that now that we're. Considered a red alert town. The good news about the red alert was we got the green light to have the increased testing for asymptomatic people. So as I I think. Councilor Borlan mentioned, there were hundreds of people on Sunday. And so we hope to continue that and we're just encouraging everyone. To get tested, which would be, you know, it would be good, especially when you think about. Some people are are asymptomatic and they are transmitting. So so that's the that's the big picture. We. We're excited about some of the good things that are happening. We're we're excited certainly about the construction. And we are struggling with the with the pandemic like. I expect every every school system in the country is going through the same thing. So that's my report. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Dr. Grenier. Thank you for the news on the superintendent search and the update on. COVID in our schools. Councilor Melendez had his hand up.
Yes, I just wanted to. Thank Dr. Grenier for his service to our town. During the short time that that I have have known him, I've, he has been nothing but. The greatest asset to our to our town and 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 the education. The 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 most important thing I think local government does is educate the next generation, and I think we've been fortunate. To have Dr. Grenier for as long as we have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Melendez. Very well said. I second that. Councilor Obrey.
I just wanted to say the same thing. I think you've done an outstanding job. And all your different experiences in life came together and made Groton a much better place. I want to thank you so much.
You're welcome. It's an honor.
Just giving everybody a minute. Councilor Franco.
Thank you. I too would like to thank you for all that you've done for Groton and all that you, all the energy and. Time that you put into everything and I'm sure. COVID has not been the best on your way out the door. I'm sure it's been very stressful and hard on you. With everything that's going on, but I thank you for all that you've done. I do have some questions about the schooling, though. Do you think? That they, I'm not really sure who decides this. Is it the Board of Ed or if it's or if it's maybe you? Would there be any possibility of maybe a longer term shutdown than just a week at a time or? I know it's really hard on especially like elementary parents, I mean, because they. They use this as like a childcare and it's really difficult. Might be easier on the high school parents, but I'm just curious as to how this all works out.
Well, the answer to the question is, it really is the superintendent's responsibility.
Okay.
But it's usually a decision made, but it's always a decision made jointly with with the local health department. But I can tell you, just last week, when we we had. Numerous contacts depending upon who the individual is that that tests positive. When when we know there's a lot of people. We think two things. One is we want to be sure we get to everybody in in a in a quick timeframe. And and if it's really extensive throughout the school, the contacts. If we give it two weeks, we we can rest assured that pretty much we have all the test results. And even if somebody tests negative early in the process and they ultimately show. That they are infected, we get that result. Whereas there was an elementary school that tested positive on Monday. And when we did the contacts. The person was pretty much in contact with only like two people. And so and we knew who those two people were, so we we asked those folks to to go home. Get tested, stay self quarantined. So there really wasn't a need, but. You know, I think. When the really, and the other practical thing, and I figured. I figured a long time ago, this is going to happen. The practical thing is, if we have numerous contacts. That are staff members. We just can't operate a school if we have 10 people who are out. I mean, we have, we have subs, but. We don't have 10 subs, certainly not if it's if it's a couple of schools. So. In 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 the case of of the three schools. S B Butler, Northeast Academy and the high school, we just didn't have the staff. So please God, everything will calm down. Two weeks will go by. If but if the infections continue, I think we're all keep our fingers crossed after Thanksgiving, for example. That. If the if it doesn't continue to spread, we'll be okay. If it continues to spread, it's it's going to be. Obviously, a health concern, a safety concern, but but really a practical concern. We're not going to be able to open these schools. That that's sort of where we are. But yeah, it may, but. Your first question is, yes, it it rests with the superintendent and, you know, and of course, I. I work very closely with the with the school administration and then with Ledge Light.
Right. I I did see where some other schools have had to shut down because they just didn't have enough teachers.
That's it.
And that's exactly what you're talking about. I'm just, I'm just curious, like, maybe. I know it's hard and parents are trying to plan for the future and. Sometimes you might get a result maybe on a Friday or over the weekend, and then you're telling people at the last minute, you know, we're not having school this week. And I understand the difficulties of that and how hard it could be and. I'm just wondering.
Like, yeah, you're right. It it depends. It depends on the timing and it it and it's. As you, you know, I'm I'm a grandparent in this community of kids who go to school and. When I have to call parents and say, oh, by the way, there's no school tomorrow. That is a huge problem and and, you know, I think we're all. We're all struggling, you know, and I I I try to weigh that frankly, if we if we think there's limited contacts, then. We 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 tend to tend to limit that, but but of course. You know, bottom line, we're always erring on the side of safety and. It's it's all, it's almost like a snow day decision. No, you you hate to tell parents, oh, God, you know, school's going to be closed tomorrow. But on the other hand, you don't want a bus sliding off the road and hurting people. So, yeah, it's it's it hasn't. It hasn't been. Exactly an easy couple of months.
No, I can't imagine. It's these are very, very tough decisions and. Thank you for trying to keep our community safe. And and congra and good luck on your retirement.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
And Dr. Grenier, that is one of the issues you pointed out to the governor when he was in New London, that you were concerned about staff. If if it started spreading, staff would go down and where would you find the bodies to to take care of the kids in the schools?
And I will say this, and and I was happy that you were able to join me with the governor. The other thing that I learned today is the kids that are coming in while they're in are doing much better than anybody else. You know, that obviously the in-person education is 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 superior. But I think if we if if we decided to do something different, like have everybody come in. I I think we would have less people come in because we wouldn't be able to socially distance. That'd be problematic.
Thank you. And I'm just looking to see if there are any hands. Councilor Borlan.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation and I wish you the best on your retirement. Thank you for your service to Groton. I am excited. I think Susan Austin is a phenomenal pick. I think she's going to do great things and it's nice that you're with the community, so that will be. Much easier for transition. I guess the big question is who's going to come in as the assistant more so than who's going to be the superintendent now.
You've got that right.
So. But thank you, thank you for your your commitment and I will say. Yeah, looking at those numbers of. Contacts, you know, it proves that the mask can work. Nothing is 100%, but it can decrease. Even in a large office where I work, we've had positive cases and it doesn't spread because 100% of the time we're we are in masks. And so it's just, it is, there is a barrier and, you know, the concern decreases as long as everybody's using the proper gear. So that's the town that we are doing such. So. With that, I happen to have a senior and a freshman experiencing the distance learning and I must say that it's been quite the experience. One enjoys it and thinks, great, I don't want to go anyway. Home and the other wishes that he could go five days a week and really has stressed that he misses that in contact time. And really enjoys those two days. So his learning style, you know, he benefits better from being there. And so it it has its challenges. So to the parents as well, as the teachers are. Creating curriculum and trying to implement and and be the chasers of it and for the parents, it is. It's been, it is very tough. Because during the day, you know, you're at work and if you're in a place like where I'm at, if you're in a procedure or something. You can't exactly help them when the internet crashes because you don't know why. And trying to, even though you have teenagers, it's, there's other concerns of just, you know. The day to day. So but I will say the staff, I only can speak from the high school perspective, the staff have been very accommodating and helpful. Mrs. McGuire, Mr. Brown and the principal up there and guidance counselors have reached out and. There was even a situation where, you know, my, one of my sons were out on a Monday, Tuesday. And then they said, you know, let's bring him in Thursday, Friday because he had missed a big chunk of, you know, so. The accommodations that they've done have been over the top and I, you know, once again, it's not a perfect structure. But it's definitely doable and I thank you for that. My question is, is how are we faring as far as reaching the children who. Are identified as needing, you know, extra services, special ed. Children, maybe that need other supports. Maybe language barriers. As a parent, you know, trying to help, you know, students myself. It's, it is tough on my end and I just try to think of of some of those other barriers that parents might be struggling with and I just wondered. Do we need more programs and how are we faring? And then my last question is, is also, I know from some other districts, I've noticed they. After attending your meeting last night, I saw some of the funding going to social workers and school counselor things. Are we offering any support groups or Zoom meetings to help parents on how to. Work from home? I have saw one of my friends out in California said, oh, once a week, they offer a parent Zoom. Per grade where parents can kind of, and that's part of that COVID funding. Where that it's like a support group for the parents to figure out ways to help their student talk a little bit about the curriculum. And kind of prepare for. You know, the the frustration and the things that they have to deal with with students. So those are my two questions, but thank you for everything and I. Wish you the best retirement.
Thank you. Well, I I can tell you. With in terms of extra help, each each school has. Put a, I think, an effective team together. Number one, to identify students who are. At least initially were disengaged and and it goes from the teacher to the administrator and to then. Social workers, counselors. I know each of the schools has been making home visits. Just to try to figure, you know, there there may be a good reason why a student, like they don't have technology. Although we've, of course, given everyone the technology, we've given everybody a computer. And we've given everybody who requested one a hotspot. So that part of it, I think, is 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 okay. I don't, I don't think that we've done, I don't think we have 100%. What we, I was talking to the principals today. It's not so much that we have kids who are not engaged at all. We have, we, but we have a lot of kids, frankly, who are not engaged enough. They they come in on a Monday or Tuesday and, you know, they they kind of drift off and they don't necessarily do the work that needs to be done. And I think everyone is very concerned with that. In terms of special ed, we've, we've expanded the four day program. To several special ed children. We've expanded the four day program to children who don't speak English. Who are level one or level two on the in the English speaking. So I think that part of it is 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 going pretty well. But, you know, of course, every time you expand a four day, you bring a child in for four days, then. You you start to worry about the cohorts that, you know, at least theoretically, we're trying to keep these kids separate. But I like, I like what your friend told you about the Zoom meetings. I know we're reaching out to parents. I know there's been significant help. We've had some of our reading specialists. I was just trying to. I've been doing like focus groups. I I used to visit classes all the time and now I don't, I don't do too much of that. I actually. When I visit a class, I do a little focus group with the kids and then I'll do, I'll meet with the teachers afterwards and. What I find is that the reading and math specialists, for example, are taking on a half a dozen kids and they call. One person was telling me that they were working with a child whose parent. Parents don't speak English. And so, but you can imagine, that's a, that's a pretty intensive one on one. If somebody helps the child with their work, they get it done. If nobody is there to help the child. And so as I, as I, as I look at our, our. Our distance learning, you know, I'm I'm nervous that we're going to have to go out full distance. I want to be sure that we've got a distance learning program with 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 backups and and if and if if we go forward. We've got about 200 paraprofessionals and we're going to deploy the paraprofessionals to to help help the children one on one. Any way that we possibly can and I I just. I just read a report this morning, I'm sure with the principals from Los Angeles Unified School District. And they reported the exact same thing, that there are a lot of kids with Ds and Fs. That sounds bad. The good, the good news for me is we're actually assessing kids as a. I had a meeting with a commissioner last week and. I think it's so important that we continue to take attendance, although sometimes attendance, it's it's a big effort to do that. And sometimes the results are not so hot. And I think we continue to to assess. Because we we can't allow ourselves, you know, to get to the end of the year and say, you know what, the kids. They just didn't do algebra two. That would be catastrophic. Or at least we'll know where they are. And and so I think, I think that whole, that whole support system. My my heart goes out to parents because I. I, as I said, I I'm a grandparent. One of my daughters has twin first graders and. She works all day long and then comes home and tries to support the kids and. And you know, when I say it's exhausting, I I mean, it's exhausting for everybody. Certainly the parents, certainly the teachers, administrators, and and in some cases, the kids. Because I, I know there are some kids who are working quite well and they're hanging in there. I will say this, in my talks with with kids, especially high school kids. The ninth, the 10th and 11th graders, they're they're kind of like. Rolling with the punches. The 12th graders are extremely anxious. They do not know what's going to happen next year and you you can just see it on their faces. It's. It's 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 very concerning to me that they don't know if the college they're applying to is going to be open next year. And so, you know, they they've got that kind of anxiety. So, you know, I think we're, we're trying to support kids. We we put social emotional learning at right at the the top of our list. So, you know, I think we 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 continue, but I like that, I like that concept. I'll I'll talk to the principals. We have hired, as I said last night, we've hired two additional social workers. We've hired a good, good number of tutors and extra support personnel. But, you know, it really gets down to almost one on one. But, you know, it really gets down to almost one-on-one. You know, we've got thousands of students. So, as, as you said, Counselor Bordelone, some kids are doing great in this. It, it's, it's actually quite remarkable. I have a member of my family who read 45 books last spring. She really likes it. But there, there are other kids who are just, you know, not, not engaged or as I say, the, the ones we're really concerned with are the ones who are not fully engaged and that, that's really a problem. We, we, we worry about that and we're, but I'll, I'll reach out and we'll, we'll see what we can do about these Zoom meetings for parents. I, I, I think that'd be terrific.
Thank, thank you. I, I think it could be, you know, people aren't educators, as I know I'm not, so it's nice to maybe be a part of some of that talk to find out.
All educators have become learners, I could tell you that.
I, I appreciate any support and tips and I'm sure others might as well. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm just going to add very quickly. As a teacher, working with the case managers, the co-teachers, the special ed teacher, the English language teacher, the school counselor for the 504 kids, we're finding ways to connect the support personnel with the kids and the technology that exists is amazing that we can have the kids in a room, we can be watching them on one device and interacting with them. I can be looking at their screen and seeing what they're doing on another device. The case manager can be logged into a chat with them, separate and working one-on-one with them during the middle of the whole class. So, so there are tons of, there's tons of technology out there and it's, it's heartening when you get the case manager who jumps right in and is reading the tests and checking the work as you're working with the other 24 kids in the class, so. The teachers are, are really working and we're trying to find ways to use all the technology to, to reach all the kids, so. And we're trying and we're trying to support the parents as well, so. And again, I'm not in the Groton School District, I'm in the Technical High School District, but I, I think the teachers in Groton are doing the same thing. They're, they're doing their best to try to reach all the kids and and to meet their needs, so. Thank you. Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Superintendent, for joining us this evening. Just again, like to align my remarks made by so many counselors, extending just the most sincere congratulations to you, Mr. Superintendent, for your tenure with our community. You know, I, I very, remember very early on, again, when I served in the State House, when, you know, right after I'd found out you had gotten the job as superintendent, you had already reached out to me for breakfast and, you know, very much enjoyed our, our discussions, especially, you know, having served on the Education Committee about, you know, the nuances of a particular legislation and, you know, and also, you know, as a superintendent, you know, for a district that, with several students with special needs, you know, my brother being one of them and I know, you know, my family has worked through your office and, you know, are very appreciative of, you know, your assistance and especially of your staff. And on, on that note, you know, I, I am so thrilled to hear that Ms. Austin will be coming, I'm sorry, Dr. Austin will be coming, the superintendent of our community. You know, she has brought such, such joy and to our community and in so many different facets through her work. You know, I know she is a teacher first before she is an administrator and it certainly comes through in her conversations. And again, probably one of the best hiring decisions you made was, was bringing her on board, so. Very much looking forward to continuing to work with her. I don't have any questions, but again, congratulations to you and very much looking forward to connecting with you in, in the future and learning about the exciting things you're doing during your retirement. Thank you, Dr. Grineer.
You're welcome. Thank you. I'll pass on your comments to Ms. Austin.
All right. Thank you again, Dr. Grineer, for coming out. I know it's probably been a very long day for you, so have a good evening, sir.
Okay. Bye-bye.
Bye. We're on to committee reports. I have nothing from Committee of the Whole. Chairman Melendez, anything from Personnel and Appointments?
No, everything we, we did, we covered in the consent calendar.
Thank you, sir. Chairman Obray, Rules?
Yes, the Rules Committee, after our last presentation, went back and revisited the rules and we had some wonderful help from some very knowledgeable people. I think you've all received a copy of it now and so I'm hoping before we do the actual meeting that if you have questions or comments or complaints or whatever, if you could just send me an email, I can maybe be prepared to work a little better with the council when we do the presentation. So, any, any suggestions are absolutely welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Obray. Public Safety Chairman Baumgartner?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As Counselor Parker stated earlier, the Public Safety Committee, which has been working very, I'm sorry, very closely in conjunction with the RTM's Special Review Committee on the Civilian Review Boards, we've been working with them to meet with several community members as well as the police chief and the town manager and then our town attorneys as well as some outside policy organizations on civilian review boards and learning more about the merits of establishing one in our community. And we have reviewed, or the Public Safety Committee, that is, has reviewed several, several different models. However, we are awaiting the final report that will come out of the special, special committee of, of the RTM to then begin deliberations for the Public Safety Committee as to how to best move forward with the potential of establishing a civilian police review board. Again, and no decision has been made on what that review board would look like or what any kind of board or commission, I'm sorry, any board that may be set up or committee that could be set up to prioritize police community relations as well as, you know, the, the call for police accountability that has been made by several counselors, community members and our former president Obama, that really was the impetus for the initial referral to create the Public Safety Committee, so. We will be having a committee meeting shortly in the next few weeks, as soon as that we review the report and we'll be discussing again potential models or different types of committees that we can, the town council would then be able to review after it makes its way through the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Baumgartner. And that's what I was going to say, any of the items that are working their way through committee, whether it be Committee of the Whole Personnel, Rules or Public Safety, will be fully discussed before the Whole Council and in the public meetings for discussion before anything would be adopted, so the public will have their second round of hearing everything that's going on when it comes before the full Committee of the Whole. All right, we are on to New Business, 10A, 2025594, Alteration of Ascenic Road, 1206 River Road. This is on page 19 in your packet and I believe we are on Counselor Parker, if I'm not mistaken. I could be mistaken.
Nope. No, no, no. It's Resolution to Approve Alterations of Ascenic Road Sandy Hollow Road, Whereas Article 5 of the Groton Code of Ordinances Designation of Scenic Roads prohibits the scenic road from being altered or improved, including but not limited to widening of the right-of-way or of the traveled portion of the highway, paving changes of grade, straightening removal of stone walls and removal of mature trees, except for good cause determined by the council after a public hearing. And whereas Mr. Tom Paul Antonio, the owner of 1206 River Road, requested the town council hold a public hearing to solicit public input regarding the alteration of River Road in order to construct a new driveway to his property that involves removal of brush and saplings in order to construct a driveway. Is that a pond? Is that supposed to be a pond that looks like?
Driveway apron?
Driveway, okay, I just want to make sure I'm reading that correctly. Driveway apron in the River Road right away and whereas the town council held a public hearing regarding the alteration of River Road on October 6, 2020 and whereas the proposed work does not encroach on or change the width, paving or grade of River Road, the proposed driveway apron will not change the character or adversely impact the neighborhood and the proposed alterations are necessary to provide safe sight lines from the driveway. Now therefore be it resolved, the town council approves the alterations of Ascenic Road, River Road as presented on October 6, 2020. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Parker and that was seconded by Obray?
Yes.
Seconded by Obray and just for the public's knowledge, these are all items that we have discussed at length in Committee of the Whole and in this case, this also went through a public hearing with public comment. Okay, seeing no discussion, we will vote on 202559, Alteration of Ascenic Road, 1206 River Road. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? And we are at nine? Yes, nine counselors. Nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. That passes unanimously. We are on to 10B, 2023094, Changes to the Town of Groton TIF Policy. This is on page 20 in your packet. I don't have that page. All right, so this is Counselor Franco, please.
Resolution to Adopt Policy Amendments to the Tax Incremental Financing Plan, whereas the Town of Groton adopted a tax increment financing TIF policy on March 6, 2018, which outlines the process of planning for reviewing and reviewing, approving and implementing TIF districts. And whereas the city, the state of Connecticut recently made some changes to the TIF enabling legislation, which requires minor changes to our TIF policy. And whereas the City of Groton adopted their TIF policy and there were a few minor items that they changed in their policy that require us to make changes to our policy. And whereas the town staff, working in cooperation with the town attorney's office and commoine, created a revised Town of Groton TIF policy and whereas the Economic Development Commission, serving in their role as the TIF Advisory Committee, was presented with these changes at their July 9, 2020 meeting for discussion purposes. And whereas the Economic Development Commission, serving in their role as the TIF Advisory Committee, voted to endorse the proposed changes at their October 1, 2020 meeting and whereas the town council held a public meeting on October 6, 2020 to solicit public input on the proposed amendments, now therefore be resolved that the town council adopts the amendments as presented on October 6, 2020. The effective date of the amended TIF policy will be November 5, 2020. I so move.
Counselors of Perry, seconded?
Yes.
Thank you. Again, this was discussed in Committee of the Whole. Seeing no discussion, we'll vote on 202309, Changes to the Town of Groton TIF Policy. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. I printed front to back, that's why I couldn't find the other one. Okay, so we are on to 202653, Mystic Education Center Restful Short-Term Tax Agreement for Mystic Education Property. This is page 21. And Counselor Heed, I think.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'll make a resolution to approve the short-term tax agreement for the Mystic Education Center property, whereas the town has been working with the state of Connecticut and Restful Homes to initiate the development of the Mystic Education Center and whereas the state of Connecticut and Restful Homes have signed a purchase and sales agreement and a lease agreement for the property. And whereas the Town of Groton and Restful Homes have signed a development agreement outlining the framework for property redevelopment. And whereas one of the items contemplated in the development agreement was a short-term tax agreement in the event the state of Connecticut pilot payments are no longer paid to the town due to the lease of the property. And whereas OPDS staff and the town attorney presented the draft short-term tax agreement to the town council at their Committee of the Whole meeting on October 13, 2020, now therefore be it resolved that the town council hereby authorizes the town manager to sign the short-term tax agreement as presented. I so move.
Franco?
Okay, so that was moved by Heed and I heard Franco as the second. And once again, discussed in committee. And I'm seeing no questions, so we will vote on 202653, Mystic Education Center Restful Short-Term Tax Agreement for Mystic Education Property. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are on to 2027131, Children First Library Space Use Agreement. This is page 22. And we are with Counselor Obray, please.
Okay, Resolution to Approve a Space Use Agreement Between Children's First Groton and Groton Public Library. Whereas the Children's First Groton, GFG, CFG, a nonprofit and community partner to the Town of Groton, devoted to the health, education and well-being of Groton children ages birth to 18, is in need of office space to conduct regular administrative work. And whereas the Groton Public Library is willing to provide a small dedicated space for ongoing CFG administrative work, including but not limited to the grant writing, meeting and events coordinator, oversight of the federally and state-funded preschool program and file retention. And whereas the Groton Public Library and Children's First Groton will enter into a year's lease, whereupon the town manager, Groton Public Library and the Children's First will annually reevaluate the agreement prior to the end of the lease. Now therefore be it resolved that the Groton Town Council hereby approves a space use agreement between Children's First Groton and Groton Public Library and authorizes the town manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the Town of Groton. I so move.
Second, Franco?
Thank you.
Moved by Obray and seconded by Franco. And this was discussed at our last Committee of the Whole. And I see no hands, so we will vote on 202713, Children First Library Space Use Agreement. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are on to 202690, Groton Heights Property on page 23. And this is, I can't just look down the table now and see who's over there, I have to actually look it up. Counselor Bordelone?
I would like to pass at this time, thank you.
Certainly. Counselor Melendez, are you able to read 202694, sir?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution to Schedule a Public Hearing for the Sale of the Groton Heights School Property, whereas the Town of Groton owns excess buildings and properties that are no longer needed for public uses. And whereas the town has been marketing the former Groton Heights School property for several years. And whereas the town has been working with the preferred developer, Thayer Mahan, on a proposal for the site. And whereas Connecticut General Statute 7163E requires a public hearing by the legislative body on the sale of real property owned by a municipality that has a value exceeding $10,000. And whereas the Town of Groton is preparing a purchase and sales agreement for the purchase of the property by Thayer Mahan after authorization by the town council, now therefore be it resolved that the town council hereby authorizes the town manager that the town council hereby authorizes the town manager to schedule a public hearing for December 1, 2020, for purposes of selling the Groton Heights School property consistent with Connecticut General Statute 7163E. I so move.
Second, Parker. Moved by Melendez and that was seconded by Parker?
Yes.
Thank you. And again, this is for scheduling a public hearing. Okay, seeing no discussion, we will vote on 202690, Groton Heights Property. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. And we are on to 20212011, Sealy School Property Short-Term Fixed Assessment Agreement on page 24 in your packet. And I think this is Counselors of Perry.
Resolution to approve the Short-Term Fixed Assessment Agreement for the former Williams Sealy School property. Whereas the town has been marketing the former Williams Sealy School property for over a decade. And whereas a public hearing was held by the town council and the sale of the property was authorized by the town council and not vetoed by the representative town meeting. And whereas the Town of Groton entered into an option to purchase for the eventual purchase of the property by Donmar Residential LLC on April 17, 2020. And whereas the Groton Town Council approved the concept plan for the property. And whereas a short-term fixed assessment agreement was contemplated in the option to purchase agreement for the property. And whereas the town council approved the short-term fixed assessment agreement at the Town Council Committee of the Whole meeting on October 27, 2020. And now therefore be it resolved that the town council hereby authorizes the town manager to sign the short-term fixed assessment agreement with Donmar Residential for the former Williams Sealy School property as presented. I so move.
Second, Heed.
Moved by Zep Perry and seconded by Heed. And this was approved on October 27 at Cal. Seeing no discussion, we'll vote on 202120, Sealy School Property Short-Term Fixed Assessment Agreement. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Okay, I just want to do a quick count. Okay, so eight in favor, one opposed, Baumgartner.
No, no, I said aye as in, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I heard you come in. There was a lag and I heard you come in on the nay. So nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. Correct?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so we are on to other business. And this is 2024644, Open Agenda, view for November. This was on page 25 in your packet. And you can see we have quite a few things here and we have done our best to pace them out accordingly so that we can do justice to all of them. And I would ask, since the manager is not with us this evening, if you have concerns, please email. And we will do our best to readjust. We are, we are constrained by time on some of these items. But as you can see on your list, we have quite a few things for the 10th, for the 24th, the 8th. We're booked all the way through January with agenda items. So, again, if you have concerns or comments about any of these items, please email the manager and me. You can copy the rest of the council on it and then we could, we could take up whatever your concern is, okay? All right, so that is it for the agenda. Having said that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Moved by Parker. Is there a second?
Second.
Was that Zep Perry?
Yes.
All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are adjourned at 8:08 PM. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. Stay safe. Wear your masks. Be well. Thank you, Mr. Ryan, for joining us. Mr. Greeley.
Bye, Joe.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.